Je suis honoré d'avoir tous ces gens fantastiques ensemble pour un acte de service. C'est ce que nous faisons ici, nous sommes dans un acte de service. Nous voulons faciliter l'awakening de l'humanité. Personnellement et tout le personnel, nous sommes aussi honorés d'avoir cette opportunité de vous servir. Nous avons un très intéressant workshop à venir. C'est d'un de nos bons amis, il vient du groupe Nirvana. Il est l'un des intervenants et des experts de notre partenaire Nirvana. Il est un coach transformational, facilitateur de travail de respiration. Il est un "ice man" et il fait beaucoup de choses folles. Et il va vous amener dans une longue journée. Je vais inviter Alex. Merci beaucoup d'être ici, frère. Je ne vais plus dire plus, je vais juste le faire. Il fera tout ce qu'il va apporter, qui va être super transformational. Enjoyez les gars, la scène est toute à vous.
Merci frère, merci tout le monde. Très très excité d'être ici avec vous tous. Je veux vous remercier de prendre le temps pour vous-même. Voici ce que nous allons faire. Nous avons un peu d'échange ici. Je vais partager avec vous beaucoup d'intrigants outils de transformation très puissants, simples, faciles à comprendre. Qui pourrait potentiellement vraiment éclater votre esprit. Mais je dois vous donner deux choses en échange. Que vous regardiez en live ou en enregistrant, c'est deux choses. La première est de me donner du temps et la deuxième de me donner de l'attention. Donc je vous prie vraiment de faire vraiment de l'espace où vous êtes. Juste permettez-vous de sentir complètement ce qui se passe. Avec cela en tête, je vous invite maintenant à fermer vos yeux. Et ralentir votre respiration. Et où que vous soyez, commencez à vérifier autour de vous. Les différentes bruits, les différents sons. Peut-être que vous êtes dans un endroit unfamiliar maintenant. Spendez quelques secondes, juste attraper un son après l'autre. Je vous invite maintenant à tomber dans votre corps. Encore une fois, attentivement, lentement. Focusez sur votre respiration. Brevez par la gorge. Et essayez de ralentir votre respiration. Chaque respiration. Est-ce que vous pouvez vous concentrer fermement sur vos pieds droits? Qu'est-ce qui se passe quand vous vous concentrez et vous mettez toute votre conscience, toute votre attention sur vos pieds droits? Mettez votre conscience sur votre pied droit. Maintenant sur votre jambe droite. Le genou. La partie entière de la jambe. Maintenant votre hanche. Et maintenant nous allons de nouveau vers vos pieds à gauche. Pouvez-vous sentir, pouvez-vous respirer par vos pieds à gauche seulement? Pouvez-vous respirer par vos pieds à gauche? Et mettez votre conscience juste sur votre pied à gauche. Mettre en haut votre jambe à gauche. Et à ce point, vérifiez avec vous-même. Est-ce que je me concentre sur ma jambe à gauche ou est-ce que mon esprit flotterait autour? Juste vérifiez. Et ramenez votre conscience à votre jambe à gauche. Nous allons maintenant monter à notre hanche. Et maintenant vertebra par vertebra, nous allons grimper notre dos. Encore une fois, respiration lente, profonde, gorge respirante. En grimpeant votre poitrine. Et en faisant ainsi, vérifiez. Comment ressentir mon dos? Vous arrivez à votre poitrine. Et maintenant vous allez descendre votre arme droite. Tout le chemin jusqu'à vos doigts droits. Et revenir en haut. Revenez à votre poitrine. Maintenant descendre votre arme à gauche et les doigts à gauche. Allons de retour en haut cet arme. Et mettons 100% de votre conscience sur votre gorge. Comment ressentir votre gorge? Qu'est-ce qui se passe quand vous vous concentrez sur votre gorge? Parlez-vous de votre vérité? Vivez-vous votre vérité? Comment cela résonne dans votre corps quand je dis cela? Et maintenant mettez votre conscience à votre tête, cortex préfrontal. La partie derrière de la tête. Maintenant toute la tête. Et encore une fois. Avez-vous été présent tout le temps ou est-ce que votre esprit flotterait autour? Rendez-le retour, rendez-le retour à la respiration. Respiration lente, profonde, gorge. Et maintenant, mettons notre conscience à notre foie. Et notre sexe. Qu'est-ce qui se passe quand nous nous concentrons sur ces points d'énergie? Nous stockons beaucoup là-bas. L'agression, la méfiance, la frustration. Prenons quelques secondes pour respirer dans notre foie, dans notre sexe et vérifiez. Qu'est-ce qui se passe là aujourd'hui? Prenez un respiration profonde. Et laissez-les partir. Et maintenant mettez votre conscience à votre cœur, à votre cœur supérieur. De même, pas de jugement, juste conscience. Comment sentez-vous? Êtes-vous dans votre cœur? Sentez-vous expansion ou contraction? Rien à juger, juste conscience. Maintenant je vais dire quelque chose. Et je veux que vous répétez fort et clairement dans votre tête cinq fois. Aujourd'hui est le meilleur jour de ma vie. Et finalement, avant de ouvrir nos yeux. Je vais vous inviter à faire quelque chose de très très important. 设定目标给自己啊个问题 Google 但你去哪里找这些问题? 这更有趣请反思一下今天想问自己的正确问题明白你的意图是什么为什么今天你要呼吸这可能 potentially 是生命转化如果你给自己空间和时间这是一个不可思议的强大的体验 不管你在世界上在哪里，我们都相连 请沉浸其中咱们三个一起深呼吸全身吸气然后让它走 再一次，吸气 然后让它走 最后一次，吸气 和着声音， exhale 现在 softly 开启眼睛 你好大家，我的名字是Alex 我的公司和品牌是Breathing Call breathingcallbali sur Instagram, breathingcall sur autres médias sociaux 我邀请你关注我，问我任何问题 我喜欢和人互动 你的生活有什么事情，麻烦联系我 我负责六周训练的轻量化 transformation 你想知道我是谁 我是谁，超越我自己讲述的故事 如果你也想将这种练习带到世界 是教师培训，所以你可以自由地联系 自由联系，如果你也想加入一些我们世界各地举办的 workshops 所以我们之前做了什么? 所以花时间去感受你的身体 今天我感觉怎么样? 发生什么? 我带来了什么? 是绝对 fundamental 的，如果你想扩张你的 reach 自己扩张因为这是第一个知识你是动物 而动物们做什么? 总是他们适应自己的环境 而我们，如此 superior 的存在，我们做什么? 我们为我们自己调整我们的环境我们发明空调 我太冷了，拜托给我一件外套 我再也不爱你了，拜托，新的伙伴 我们 constantly 想保持我们的 integrity 我是谁? 我很高兴我是什么让我们改变其他人 我为什么要改变? 我就是我，他们不接受我就是我 好吧，猜猜看，大新闻 你是动物你的生命中的每一口气所以今天我不会谈论那些过于复杂的事情你们可以信任我现在我要投降 我要投降我的思想，我要放手 一个不可思议的 routine 如果你每天做，可以在你生活的每一个方面都有 ripple 效果就是这种 transformation 你知道为什么吗? 你的脑子不是完全清晰你的大脑波形在 theta 仍然，我清醒吗? 我不是完全清晰这是我们可以进入 hypnotherapy 并让你深入到你的创伤 而通过每天呼吸，首先 用第一天的 15 分钟，和你生命中最重要的一个人 我指的是你自己 大部分人早上第一件事做什么? 你查看外面的世界，外面发生什么? 你的日子会怎么过，取决于每个人 或者你会获得令人惊叹的信息你会有一个美好的一天 或者是糟糕的消息，你会有一个糟糕的日子 伙计，我不想让这个机会 在决定我今天是什么时候 不，我开始一天 centered，连接 无论你做呼吸工作， meditation 或其他练习 这是黄金时间，黄金时间自我 transformation 这没有意义 你走遍你的生命，拥有这种能力改变你生命中的每一个 aspect 你并不高兴 你想减重，你想有更好的性生活，你想睡得更好 你想要达到什么? 呼吸是答案 你离开这个星球如何? 用一个 exhale 最后的呼吸 当房间里有狮子时，发生了什么? 或者太多消息，或者 anything 我们会像这样 嘴部呼吸，速度呼吸 我们通过喉咙呼吸，然后强行一个 exhale 因为猜猜看，通过嘴巴呼吸激活了神经系统的一部分，被称为 sympathetic nervous system 喉咙，parasympathetic nervous system 它是放松的 你想让自己激活吗? 不需要咖啡了 你想慢下来去睡觉吗? 呼吸通过喉咙 你觉得你为什么喜欢唱歌这么多? 你觉得人们听了歌之后放松了吗? 他们 prolonged exhale 对不起，大家，这是我能做的最好的 但我现在在做什么? prolonging an exhale 社会接受的 prolonging of an exhale 回到你，你是动物 他们做什么? 他们打架，他们打架，然后他们离对方远去，他们做什么? 他们的翅膀被摇动而我们也是但是我们需要在一个社会接受的 context 所以我们在俱乐部喝酒或者我们在课堂上去 zumba 因为这是好的 哦，上帝，我不知道我是什么 当然，因为突然之间 你做 intuitively 这里是你们两个的第二个信息你不能信任你的大脑你的大脑不是在你控制你现在相信的一切都是故事 它是故事，这就是所有 你决定相信哪个故事 你想知道自己是谁，在 psychotherapy 好运，20 年的练习 20 年的你试图记住发生了什么你的生活中的创伤甚至发生了 这就是我们今天要做的，这是我的邀请 每天早上你会解脱你会 bypass the brain 我们在我们的皮肤上记录问题 但是发生了什么? 发生了什么? 这很疯狂，我的朋友 我们不再拥有我们的身体请告诉我应该做什么 我会跟随我被教的，因为我没有线索 我不是自己连接 我的身体对我说什么? 爱你的身体如果我的身体现在与我交流 你知道病和健康的区别吗? 我在病，我们 在健康你们两个的另一个信息我们被教的所有东西都是 secondary 长久是连接现在所有研究支持这一点 白色区域围绕着世界，总是同样的故事 没有关系于 diet 它是培养深厚 powerful 的连接在你的生命中如何培养 powerful 的连接，如果你不是自己连接 所以我们今天所做的非常 fundamental 因为这是一切的钥匙一旦你开发了与自己连接的能力 自己照顾，自己爱 而这不是自私这就是我们正在做的事情这就是我们每天做的事情 我们有，它总是存在的 从外部 nothing 可以填补你内在的缺口 这很有道理，对不对? 所以从内心你会发现答案你会得到它 它不需要几年的练习， mastery 像 yoga 和 qigong 和 tai chi 我们都去同一个地方 是与自己连接，是 slowing down the brain waves 今天我带来了什么你的白天 相信我，你会在一个不同的水平上工作 这里还有一个秘密，你有两个选择 或者你定义你的环境听起来 他发生了什么? 他五年前失去了孩子 这就是他那么沮丧的原因，这很有道理 我们有多少人知道他们由他们的环境定义他们一直错 一旦你幸福，你会致富 让它沉淀让我可以 visualize 我想的生活我们会在一会儿会带你通过一个呼吸工作 session 跟着你的 visualization 我希望你能 visualize 你想的生活 我希望你能感受到我想要的生活，我想活的 emotion 和它回到你的身体，这里，现在 这是秘密 创作它，设计它， visualize 它，留下它 一旦你把它留下它就像魔法一样发生这是 woo woo 部分 我告诉过你，如果不是科学依据 我会告诉你 但是，伙计，有很多关于这个的故事 一旦你相信它，你会开始感受它 所以你需要做的只是放开你有限的信念一旦你相信它你就会离开身体开始感受它你到达了新的自己我不会教你如何是超级人类我会教你如何是人类 每个人都可以做到，每个人都有相同的能力 我们有相同的超能力呼吸我们的能力脆弱成为我们想要的那个人 你只是定义它，你只是决定它 所以这就是我们做的事这是为了你理解大背景为什么我们做我们要做的理解呼吸科学如果你想记住一种呼吸技巧这就是那个会来的 最大的错误，大多数运动员，我在说那些参加 olympic games 的人 这是用于亲吻，用于说 poetry 大部分时间，如果你可以 吃饭，但不是用于呼吸 这个美丽的机器是设计用于呼吸的大部分人都有 dysfunctional breathing，因为他们通过嘴巴呼吸 当你通过喉咙呼吸，魔法发生 首先，有一种气体叫做 nitric oxide 这些你可以彻底研究，它在外面 在身体中释放，只有你通过喉咙呼吸 它做什么? 它是 vasodilatator 血液 circulation 等等一个时刻是 gold 如果你想训练自己通过喉咙呼吸是在睡觉期间我自己粘贴强迫自己通过喉咙呼吸超级便宜的小技巧 它做什么? 我不脱水我记得我的梦想每次我醒来我有点 freak of all that HRV 和 resting rate 和所有 伙计，差别巨大 你知道，我每天贴上嘴唇 不贴上嘴唇，我是一个巨大的嘴唇呼吸者 巨大的嘴唇呼吸者，我们都是嘴唇呼吸者 这是 evolution 的产品，因为我们不再吃我们的食物 我们不吃食物，所以我们不需要很大的嘴唇 如果你去查看 indigenous population，他们总是通过喉咙呼吸 他们有漂亮的空间在他们的牙齿之间 而在我们的社会，我不知道，数字，大概 60% 70% 的孩子们需要口罩你完美 如果你需要口罩，是因为发生了什么 没有意义吗? 当然有意义所以呼吸通过喉咙全程 另一个理由是，当你通过嘴巴呼吸 发生什么? 吸气，氧气 吸气，CO2 当我通过我的嘴唇呼吸，我大量 CO2 注意 我们总是关注，我有足够的氧气吗? 我的氧气好还是不好? 好吧，猜猜看，你的氧气总是好的 现在你的氧气水平是 95% 和 100% 滋润 所以如果你呼吸最理想，你会达到 100% 你不能做太多的氧气水平如果你只是正常呼吸但是你的 CO2 级度可以大幅下降而 CO2 是金色气体 是那个，我们叫 Bohr effect 如果你不想在肌肉上感到疼痛如果你不想有头痛 我需要做什么? 确保我不要放太多 CO2 我希望你理解我们为什么 consciously 所以我们今天会通过嘴巴呼吸，但我们 consciously 所以每天通过喉咙呼吸是这样的而每当有人问问题 正常的问题，正常答案，自动的 这是你在社会上做的事，我想每个人都爱我 是，当然 现在我可以做这个 你知道什么? 是的，我喜欢再来一杯 不是同一个答案 现在，我真的想要那杯 不要对酒精有判断，这没有意义 仅仅服从你的决定 我给你另一个，对大多数人来说会有效 谁在吃菜因为妈妈和爸爸 30或40 年前告诉他们 在非洲，穷人们死了，吃菜 40 年后，你是个傻子，但你有道理，吃菜 你仍然有条件吃菜 你知道这没有意义，但你仍然做 你需要吃到，你知道，你想吃到 80% 你不想成为傻子，如果你是个傻子，你吃的太多了 它就像如果你饿了，你脱水 你知道什么? 我现在有足够的食物如果你是 environmentalist，我是 你带个 Tupperware 一起我享受你的早餐 是的，这是一个很重要的，你可以做这一切 你遇见一个人我想更多的人在生活我怎么感觉这个人 因为我相信，你不能信任你的大脑 哦，她很热，当然我想遇见那个女孩 你知道，你可以代替它，你写了所有这些故事 但是你的身体，不 身体知道你知道有多少人结婚了 20年 然后他们说了什么? 20 年的婚姻后 "I took this job, and I knew from the beginning it was not the right job for me," et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So do not trust your brain. Yeah? You're just a product of conditioning. Whatever you think you believe, "I'm for vaccine, of course I'm for vaccine, I'm against vaccine, that's crazy to want vaccine." It's a story. Democrats, Republicans, da-da-da-da-da, whatever, vegan, meat eaters, stories, 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 stories. Okay? Fuck all that. Go back to your beautiful self and check in. What is happening in my body? What do I want? And you know what happens when you do that? And you come to life, and you come to the world being, "Who the fuck you wanna be?" People love you, people admire you, says, "Oh my god, he's got the guts, she does it, oh my god, she's amazing, look at that," whatever that is. Because we all want that, we all want to be true to ourselves, we all just want to, "Okay, I want me, I want me, who am I?" And you can't do that by thinking about it, by reflecting on it. So stop. You can't have a top-bottom approach to life. It doesn't work. You must have a bottom-up approach. You wanna know a little secret? There are neurotransmitters and neural circuits between your brain and your heart. Twenty percent of the communication is brain to heart, eighty percent is heart to brain. Up to you. You wanna be a human, using the full range of your potential? Connect to your breath. Now, let's go a bit further down. You're with me, don't hesitate if you've got questions, reach out to me, post them, I'm happy to take any question at any time, no taboo, go for it. We're gonna do something called connected breath. And it's something like that. It's an incredible practice, okay? So forget what I said before. We're breathing through the mouth, we're connected, the inhale and the exhale, we're continuously breathing. And what we're doing is we are, technically, we are reducing oxygen to the brain, we're getting hyper-focused. I promise you, it is a lot that is happening there. You go to an alter state of consciousness if you do that for about an hour. The guy who defined it, who found it, his name is Stanislas Grof. For twenty years, he worked with LSD. LSD was used in a medical setting for patients who had some kind of mental illness to go beyond and go to an alter state. I don't like the word alter state, it's a proper state, properly. And then they made it recreational drug, and then decided that, "Nay, we don't want people to be too aware and too awake, let's make it illegal." So now it's considered a party drug. But let's go back to the origin. No, it was used by doctors who wanted their patients to go back to their trauma, go back to their beautiful self, bypass all the stories. And when it became illegal, what did Stanislav Grof? He needed a new modality, a new way to get people to access that state. And boom, he got it through breathwork. He got it through connected breath, that's where it's coming from. So in the technique that we are gonna do today, we're gonna do that, but we're gonna do that for five minutes. Yeah? Five minutes of connected breath. Very important, guys. You inhale through the mouth, hundred percent, so I take a full inhale, but I let go the exhale. I don't, I don't force the exhale. Word of warning here, you can get dizzy, lightheaded, so you could pass out during these practices. So always, always practice on a yoga mat, always, always practice if you do it sitting, with nothing dangerous around you, because you could hurt yourself. Also, word of warning, pee before you go into the breath. Because when you wanna get out of the breath too quickly, you could be, you know, not completely awake and hurt yourself. So always go to the toilet, never do it driving, never do it in a swimming pool, because you could hurt yourself. Also, please do not practice if you're pregnant, do not practice if you've got epilepsy, and in general, if you have high, low blood pressure or issues. I'm all in favor on doing it, but I would like to guide you a bit more. So by all means, do it with a coach, do it with a facilitator, happy to point you to many wherever you are in the world. I have tons of friends who do these practices around the world, happy to connect you with them. So that's the word of warning, very important. So that's the first phase. We're gonna do that for five minutes, giving us a microdose of this LSD, you know? We're kind of releasing natural DMT when we do that. It's a beautiful, beautiful experience. So that's the first part. Second part, we're gonna hold our breath on the exhale. I'm not forcing my exhale, my abs are not engaged, I just let go of the exhale and I hold. For a while, we're gonna do four rounds. First one's gonna be one minute, one minute and a half, two minutes, yeah, two minutes, and then as long as you want. You can do more than you think you can. You're an animal. All the limitations that you have are just stories. And you're gonna experience it by holding your breath longer than you've ever held your breath. I don't have time, but I could explain to you the science behind it. We're playing with our pH level. You know, you're reducing your CO2, and the CO2 is what triggers the urge to breathe. So that's why you can hold your breath longer, basically. Okay? So we're playing with our chemistry in our beautiful bodies. Now I'm holding my breath on the exhale. Kumbhaka in Pranayama. It's a beautiful state to be, where nothing's happening, where you can, let's, you know, I'm in Upput, I am allowed to say that, you realign your chakras, or you just pause and feel, and that energy points in your body just come to place. We store issues in our tissues, it's here that it's happening, you know? So all of a sudden, we're allowing maybe a minute, a minute and a half of nothingness. And another tip, you can always do less. So if you wanna hold your breath longer, stop the noise in your head, get out of the way. The brain is using twenty percent of the oxygen of the body. So stay with your heartbeat, stay with the sound of my voice, stay with one maybe point in your body that needs attention right now, and just stay there, stay there, and just hold the breath and be. Then we're gonna do a short exhale, and a very deep inhale. Through the nose, it's called the shoot. We shoot it up, all the way up, 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 shoot. What we're doing, we're moving energy, store negative emotions, and we are moving them up, liberating them through the thymus gland, opening our heart, and then all the way to the pub, pituitary gland, you know, just expanding it. Okay? So that's again a little bit woo-woo, but you wanna feel that spinal fluid into your vagus nerve, going up, all the way to the top, to what the hippies call the third eye. You know, you can have a medical term or a hippie term, it's the same, energy points or chakra. You know, that's the problem in our societies, you know, we associate things with decorum, "Oh, it's wearing, it's dressed like that, so we don't listen." But it's, the hippies are right. They shouldn't be dressed the way they are, so everyone could listen to them more, but it's there, everything is correct. It's always been there, same with all the religions, it's always been there, but they do so much harm around the world that we don't listen to them. So we're doing this, it's called the shoot. So that's, if, so if you are interested in this, we've got Stanislas Grof, we've got the Wim Hof method, which is a basic structure, and now we've got Dr. Joe Dispenza, really shoot, the shoots, that we've, now we're doing, and now we are holding, we are shooting it up. So I'm, and when I'm at the top, what I'm doing, I'm pressing my hands, pressing my butt, my lower back, my abs, advanced, you can put your tongue at the roof of the mouth, and you can press the perineum, and basically you are just shooting energy up, shoot, 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 shoot. And you do that for maybe ten seconds, and then you let go. You hold the breath at the top, but you let go of the body. And now you enjoy the bliss. That's your DMT release, right there. You don't get high on your own. But in full control, with intention, remember, I ask you, what is your question today? Because breathwork will give you the answer. But if you don't have a question, you won't get an answer. If you don't know where you're going, good luck getting there. Always think, "What is my intention? Why am I breathing today?" So we're doing that, and we're holding our breath at the top. Maybe thirty seconds, one minute, doesn't matter, just enjoy the bliss. And then we're releasing, prolonging the parasympathetic. Remember? Long exhale, so we're gonna exhale through our teeths. Prolonging our exhale. And now comes the most important moment of breathing, which I don't see enough in most of the practices that I named before. You do nothing for two minutes. You do nothing, you just breathe normally, connect to nose breathing, you want to have long, deep breath. The ideal number of breath, five to six breaths per minute. So long, deep inhale, slow, long exhale. Okay? Why is that the most important part? If you want to experience euphoria, you must experience dysphoria before. Euphoria is deeply connected to dysphoria. Look in your life. Remember when you had an exam, a stressful event, something that you organized, and now it's over? How does that feel? Isn't that the best beer in the world that you're drinking, or the best swim that you have, or whatever it is you're doing? But if you hadn't experienced the stress before, you wouldn't enjoy that pleasure. So what am I doing now? Because I had so much stress, all these stressful breathing techniques, and now I do nothing. Now I consciously stressed my body in order to appreciate the beautiful rest period that comes next. So I'm artificially, consciously creating euphoria. When you will finish this practice, you will feel happy, but you will have produced it. It's not something that is related to anything, any substance or anything coming from the outside, no. You have played with the chemistry in your beautiful body and created that happiness from within. It's all, it's all liquid and gas and stuff that we're producing anyway. So might as well be in control and deciding, "Hey, I might produce it for myself." And all I'm asking you to do, fifteen minutes every morning, breathe. It's not rocket science, is it? Okay? We're gonna do four rounds of that. At the end, I'm gonna guide you through a visualization. I will want you to just project, "What is the life I want to live?" And then bring that back, bring that emotion. And now all of a sudden, boom, you're in your new self, you're upgraded, this is who I want to be, this is how I want to feel, and I feel it now. I feel now, regardless of what's going on in my life, regardless of all the shit that is happening, I have defined how I want to feel. That's why it's so beautiful, so simple. And the more you do it, the more the body will know and have a memory of that. And now, all of a sudden, you can tap into it anytime you want. Alright, enough talking. Do you have any question? I can take a few questions if you have questions. No questions, but don't hesitate after, happily, happily take any question you may have. So I invite you to take one minute break, time to get up, have a little wee, find a comfortable space, you can lay down, you can wear an eye mask, I like to do that, be completely in your body, you can just sit comfortably, whatever feels right for you. I tell you the difference, if you lay down, it's more a healing modality. If you want to sit, it's more a spiritual practice. So, you know, some days, there is some thing you want to heal, can be a trauma, can be emotional, can be physical, it's the same, really. Or it's, you know, working on your connection to something maybe superior, your ancestors, you know, there's a lot that could go on there. Alright, guys, so I give you that, a few seconds to get, to get ready. Also in the room, if you need to get ready, I'm gonna get my little timer. And we're gonna go for some breathing cold, deep breathwork. So again, guys, if you want to get the recordings of all that, you want to get many, many tips and all that, Breathing Cold on social media, Breathing Cold Bali on Instagram, connect with me every three months, I do a six-week online training, regardless whether you want to teach this or learn in detail all these practices and many more, just reach out to me, happily discuss what's going on for you. Okay? I hope I gave everybody with this commercial break enough time to get ready. So now, please close your eyes and just connect. Connect with your body. Just be. Feel your body in the ground, slow down your breath. And set an intention. Why am I breathing today? Why am I here? Nothing to worry anymore, just relax and enjoy. Enjoy this moment that you're taking for yourself. And together, here we go. Full inhale, and let it go. And now through the mouth. At your own rhythm, full in. Keep going, keep breathing, keep connecting, the inhale, where's the exhale? You never stop at the top, you never stop at the bottom. It's a wave, it's a beautiful wave. You never stop the wave, it goes. Keep going, keep breathing, stay with me, stay with the breath, nowhere to go. If your mind is wandering around, bring it back to your beautiful breath the whole time. Do not stop the breath. If you feel dizzy, anything happening in your fingers, it's okay, you can always slow it down by breathing through your nose if you need. If you want more, go stronger. If it's too much, correct it, slow it down, breathing through your nose. Let's go. What we're doing here, we're saturating our oxygen, we're reducing our CO2. Our pH is increasing, more alkaline, let's go. Stay with your breath the whole time. Do not stop breathing. Beautiful breath, inhale and exhale. Feel free, the body needs to move, just allow the body to express itself in any form, any way you want. Keep going, keep breathing, another two minutes, keep going. You're doing great, keep going, almost there, keep going, don't give up, stay with the breath. Trust that the body is doing everything it needs, and if the brain comes in the way, if you feel it's too much, tell yourself, "It's a story, I can keep going." Do not stop the breath. You're getting there, almost there, keep going, keep the inhale, following the exhale, hundred percent in, seventy percent out, and here we go, ten. Three. Two. One. And the last inhale, exhale and hold. And now you hold your breath on the exhale. Nothing to do. Trust that your body has... Trust that your body has everything it needs. No need to breathe anymore. You can hold your breath longer than you think you can. Any movement in the body, any urge to breathe, you can hack it by just swallowing, moving your belly, your toes, your fingers, flittering your eyelids. Trust that you can hold your breath longer than you think you can. You are in control. Whenever you feel the urge to breathe, you stay. You decide when you take the next breath. But for now, another 10 seconds. Here we go, we're gonna start with an exhale in five, four, three, two, one. Exhale, full in, through the nose. Inhale, 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 inhale. Squeeze the fists, the lower back, the butt, the abs. Press the perineum, tongue against the roof of the mouth and shoot it up. Shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up. Hold, hold. Hold the breath, relax the body. But you hold at the top now, hold at the top. And you enjoy the bliss. Enjoy. Feel your organs, feel the stillness you've created within. Feel the space, the expansion, the realm of possibilities. Allow yourself to just feel in your body what's going on for a few more seconds. And now through the teeth, exhale. And the next inhale is through the nose. Exhale through the nose. And now stay with the nose breathing. Relax and slow down. Nothing to do, just breathe. And enjoy, enjoy. You're breathing, you're alive, amazing is that? And just appreciate this incredible gift of being here and now in that body. You've got, appreciate your feet, your legs. Remember where they've taken you all these years. You've taken them for granted, just express gratitude for this body of yours. And just do nothing else. You now slow down your breathing. Enjoying your breath. After this exercise, just relax. And just check in, how did I do on this first round? Was I present? Was my mind wandering around? Goddamn monkey mind? Or are you into your reptilian brain? Are you going deeper within? Stay in the sensation in the body. Put a strong intention for the second round to go deeper, to stay in the present, in the body, in the sensation. How did you go with your intention? How are you doing with your question? What are you breathing for on your second round? And together, full inhale and exhale. Full in and out. Again, you don't stop at the top, you don't stop at the bottom. You just flow through the mouth now. In through the mouth, out through the mouth. Keep going, keep breathing, keep charging your body. Keep lowering your CO2. Keep playing, you are the alchemist. You change the chemistry of your beautiful body on demand consciously. Go deeper, deeper within, enjoy. Whatever you do, don't stop the breath, stay connected. Any sensation, any feeling, any emotion that is coming up, allow it to come up. You're safe, let it out, let it all out. It's okay. And if you feel you want more of it, don't hold the breath. Keep going with the breath, keep going, keep going, let it come. Trust that you're doing everything you need. You don't have to do everything in a certain way. Just feel what the body needs right now. What do you want? Do you want to go stronger or softer? Do you want to go slower or faster? What it is that the body is telling you? Your body will be so happy that you finally listen. Almost there, keep going, keep breathing, keep going. Don't force the exhale, you just let it out. In life, you never force anything out, doesn't work. You just let it go, as the song say. What are you calling in with every breath? What am I calling in? What am I letting go off? What am I calling in? What am I letting go off? Keep going, keep breathing, keep charging. You're almost there, don't stop. And here we go, ten. Five. Three. Two. The last one, full in and let it go. And hold, hold the breath on the exhale. And relax, relax your jaw, relax your tongue, relax your whole body, stay out of your head, remember, stay out of your head. Feel into your body. Focus on your heartbeat, focus on my voice. Or even better, focus on one point in your body. That point that needs attention right now, that needs healing. Just stay there. And bring it that beautiful healing capacity that is innate in each and every one of us. Halfway there. Trust me, trust yourself. You can all do it. When your body is gonna start moving, it's okay. It's the first signs, it's just conditioning. Your body doesn't know yet, but you are safe. Nothing can happen. Just relax. Any movement, relax. Almost there. Almost there. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale and now through the nose, inhale. All the way to the top, shoot it up, through the nose, shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up. Home, tighten your abs, glutes, fists, lower back, press the perineum, tongue against the teeth. Shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up, shoot it up. Keep that tension, keep that tension, keep, keep, keep. Hold the breath, relax the body. Relax everything now, enjoy the bliss. You're holding your breath at the top, your lungs are full. And nothing else matters. And together through the teeth, exhale. All the way to the bottom. And the next inhale is through the nose. The next exhale is through the nose. And now you continue for two minutes of pure relaxation. Nothing to do. Oh yes, one thing, keep a soft smile on your face. And just appreciate yourself. Appreciate yourself. Look at you. Look what you've been through, look where all you've done that brings you here and now. Just appreciate that. No matter your story, no matter what happened to you, now you are here. Now you're taking time and space. And you're allowing yourself to feel. And let everything out that needs to come out. Get out of the way, it's all okay, it's all welcome. You are not a superhuman. You're a fucking human. And that's even better. We share the same superpower, our ability to be vulnerable. You want dating tips? Be vulnerable, done. And now reconnect. Why am I breathing today? What was my intention when I started? A bit over an hour ago? Where am I? And what is my intention for the next round? Let's go deeper, let's go further, together. Full in and exhale through the mouth. In. At your own rhythm, if it's too fast, that's okay. If it's too slow, that's okay. It's perfect the way it is. Just let it breathe. Just don't stop, don't stop the breath. Keep going. Keep going, keep going. You are enough. I am enough. Keep going, keep breathing, you're getting there, don't stop, don't stop. Charge me that body, charge me. Saturate your oxygen, drop your CO2 level, change the chemistry. You are the alchemist. You've always been there, you always had it, it's always been there. Just keep breathing. And allow yourself to go deeper within, deeper and deeper. Stay with the breath, out of your mind. I can feel sensations, my whole body just doing it with you right now. Buzzing in the hands, buzzing in the head. My body is happy. My cells are alive. I'm releasing adrenaline, endorphin, oroprenefrine, everything. Here we go. If it's too much, switch to the nose. You can always inhale through the nose, exhale through the mouth. It doesn't really matter which hole you get it in, just get it in. And again. We're getting there guys, almost there, don't stop, don't stop, keep going, keep going. Almost there, don't give up, stay with the breath. Trust, trust the process, trust your body, trust. And here we go, ten. Five. Three. Two. One. Last one, inhale and exhale. And hold, hold on the exhale. And relax your jaw, relax your mouth, relax everything. Stay out of your head, connect right away to your heartbeat. Feel your organs. Stay present in the sensation in the body. Cause nothing else is happening right now that is more important than you feeling into that. Just feel. Trust that whatever happens in the body, in your throat, in your upper chest, it's okay. You can do more than you think you can. You can hold your breath longer than you think you can. It's okay, you're okay, you're doing great. Just stay with me, trust, you're okay. What is going on in the body, I remind you those little hacks. You can move your fingers, move your toes, you can swallow, flitter your eyelids, move your belly, that will prolong your breath hold. Forty-five seconds to go, you can all do it. We're getting there, we're going for two minutes, you can all do it. Stay with me, stay in the body. You can do it. Almost there, getting there guys, hang on. Twenty seconds. And here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Exhale and shoot it up. Inhale through the nose, shoot it, shoot it, shoot it, shoot it, shoot it, all the way to the top. And then press, contract your abs, glutes, fists, lower back. You can press the perineum, that muscle between your genitals and your anus and tongue in the roof of the mouth and shoot it up. And hold the breath and relax. Now you're holding the breath at the top, your lungs are full. And you're enjoying the bliss. And you're enjoying the bliss. And now through the teeth, exhale. And now catch yourself, nose breathing. And nose exhale. We're running out of time, so we're gonna stay with this third round, and I'm gonna guide you now through a little visualization. But for now, just enjoy. You are here and now, you're breathing. Now stay with me. I want you to visualize yourself in the future. Really, take the time. Where are you, where are you going? Who are you with? What are you doing, what is your future self doing right now? What's going on around you? Allow yourself to add details now, colors, smells. What's going on around you? What does your future life look like right now? And I want you now to... Put your hand on your chest, on your heart, and feel, how does my future self feel right now? How does it feel if I connect to my future self? I bet it's good. So if it's good, put a soft smile on your face. And harvest, harvest these emotions, harvest the sensations. And now consciously bring it back, bring it back in the body. And feel, feel your whole body activated by these emotions. I want you, as we're gonna reconnect with ourselves, open in a few seconds our eyes. I want you to carry that energy throughout your day. Throughout your week. Throughout your life. You can do more than you think you are, you can, you are limitless. You always had it within you. It's simple. But it's not easy. Take a deep inhale. And exhale. Full in. And exhale. I'm gonna say something I want you to repeat three times, loud and clear in your head. I am limitless. Very softly. When you're ready. On your own time, open your eyes. Welcome back. So we're running out of time, we just have ten minutes, I just wanna give you the space, and I saw that beautiful Sia is here, so... If you guys have questions, I think there is a Q&amp;A coming, but I want to thank you, thank you, thank you. And I want you to just take a few seconds for you to thank yourself for taking the time and making space for the most important person in your life. Whatever happens in your day, you've got that already in the house. Well done, well done. Okay, so... We have a few questions coming, I'm sure, so don't hesitate. And welcome Sia, welcome back.
Thank you so much, man. Thank you.
Yeah, you had a good time?
Yeah, amazing, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Breath is the... Is...
Is the answer.
Is the answer.
What was your question?
It's a new drug. Should we take drugs or just breathe, and it's just like, you know, we can actually activate all of those... Sensations that people have experienced by drugs, we can have it through breath.
I mean, literally, if you are reacting to a drug, it's because a part of your body is actually responding.
It's such thing as endocannabinoids. There is DMT, natural release, that's why you experience the effect of drug. But you, of course you have it all within. You know, there is a famous story of the inventors of LSD, they brought LSD to India, and they gave a pill to a baba. Someone who had meditated for twenty years, and he took a pill. Nothing happened, so they gave him another pill. Then they gave him a third pill, now we're half an hour into it and not much is happening, and then the baba says, oh, oh yeah, oh I feel it now. That must be good for beginners.
So there already is?
Of course, of course, the problem is, why are you taking the drug, what is your intention? Are you taking the drug because, yeah, but why do you want to get high, what is your intention?
Get rid of my problems?
Exactly, does it work? Of course it doesn't work. Now it doesn't work, it come back, so the key is to set that intention, says, okay, you can do absolutely anything in life, but just set the intention. You know, I live in Bali with you, and I started a campaign called the Bali Pledge. And I believe that if we want to change the world, it's damn easy, is to just get people to set intentions. You meet someone, why do you meet this person, you come to Bali, why do you come to Bali, what is your intention? You come to Bali, I can tell you, but most people come to Bali, to be well. And how do you be well, there are three ways to be well, three avenues. One, strong connection to community. Second, connection to nature. We are connected to nature, we are animals, remember that. And the third one, we are connected to something superior to us, we are spiritual beings. Yeah, so it's really these three things in Bali called trihitakarana, that really is the way to happiness, the way to self.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome guys.
Would you go any for the questions?
Okay, we have a question that is, it was hard for me to hold the exhale until the end, but it was already much longer than I would normally, and it's in the same question.
Okay, so someone is talking about the length of the breath hold, so I tell you the answer, who fucking cares? We are attached to numbers, we're tracking our time, and we're steps, and how long I can be in the air, da-da-da-da, who cares? You know, I did it because we need some baseline, but it doesn't really matter. What matters is the quality of the connection you had with yourself. So be kind with yourself, you are who you are, you are where you are, and nothing else matters. You know, if you want to check the time, do it at the end or not, let go of all these things that, you know, I have to be certain kilos and certain size, and all these stories that are running is, I can do this or that. You know, that's, that's the answer. Now, I just wanna say one thing about the little hack that I gave you. What's happening when I'm swallowing? Why do I tell you swallow, move your belly, move your fingers, move your eyelids in order to relax? What's happening when we are stressed? You can, you're not hungry, you cannot go to the toilet, you don't want to make love. So, if I want to prolong my breath hold when my body is feeling the stress that I need to breathe, I'm gonna send us back a signal that everything is okay. How do I do that, I'm telling my body, I'm eating. I'm telling my body, I'm digesting, I'm getting ready to the toilet. I'm ready for love, you see in cartoons, moving my eyelids, moving my fingers and my toes, so I'm consciously sending a parasympathetic message to the body. Consequence, I'm prolonging the parasympathetic state, reducing the sympathetic, and I can prolong my breath hold. You can do that for an ice bath, when you're in the sauna, any forced mindfulness practice, you have it within. Running out of time, we have another question?
We have two more questions. Do you believe we can cure serious problems like cancer with breathing?
Do you believe that stress causes cancer? Do you believe that if you are... Create, do you believe that if you are, have negative thoughts about yourself, you can be sick? Yeah, so if you believe that if you have negative thoughts, you can get sick, you have to agree with the opposite. It's close together, of course positive thoughts can heal. You know, and it comes from imbalance in the body, you know, your body is keeping the score, read that book, that's a great one. We score issues in our tissues, that's why we need to release, we need to let go in any form. Anger, just let it out, scream, find your thing, just let it out, get it through the body, because when it goes out, it's not going within. Trauma happens when you don't have the space to release what's going on. So, you know, just let it out, it's okay. Next question.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's like, it's not that we're gonna make any medical prescriptions, but as we all learn, is most of the diseases, as you said, is like negativity in the body. And it's like the energy, our energy body doesn't function well, and then it turns into disease. And then like breathing or any, any sort of practice that help us to be more centered, it's just help us to our body to function better. And when the body functions better, it starts healing itself.
I mean, there are plenty of science on fasting. So what's happening, fasting, holding the breath, same saying. I give you an image so you can, you can, you can understand, very quick one. What's happening when you're home, you've got Netflix and you've got Uber Eats? What's happening to your vegetables in the fridge and all the food? It gets rotten, who cares, I've got access to everything. What's happening when you don't have access to Uber Eats anymore? Now you make use of every single ingredient in the fridge. It's exactly the same that is happening when you fast. It's exactly what's happening when you hold your breath. You are clearing and getting rid of cells that are not happy. Try, we should, check that research, there's plenty on fasting that is, that is out there. This is really the way to heal, definitely.
Thank you so much. There's a last question, do we release DMT with these breathing techniques?
So, to be very clear, the, there is no science around this.
There is no, you know, there is tons of case studies, tons of people that says, you know, in my training, we've got people who are holding ceremonies for twenty years in ayahuasca. And then they will tell you, it's exactly the same as, as, as being on LSD on ayahuasca. But there is no science supporting it, there is no... Because no one really wants you to be conscious, yeah, let's be clear, you know? Life begins when fear or coronavirus ends. That's it, you know? It's all about your relation to the story. You decide what story you want to tell yourself. And the world wants a top-bottom approach, listen, I know better. Yeah, no one wants you to think for yourself, what a mess the world will be, well, probably that's what's coming. And I love the coronavirus for that, I call it forced mindfulness, an ice bath is the same. What's happening, you're forced to be at home, good, that's what you need, you're forced to shut up with a mask, good, because that's what you need. So instead of whinging about the things you've lost, just appreciate all the new things that are available to you. I don't have to say if the coronavirus is a good thing or a bad thing, it is. It is, so might as well go with it. Might as well think it's a good thing, right? Because it doesn't change the situation, so make the most of every single moment happening in your life, man. Alright guys, I think that's our time. Thank you brother.
Thank you so much, really, really appreciate you.
Don't hesitate, yeah, if you have questions, always there to listen.
Yeah, how they can contact you?
Thank you for that. Breathing Call Bali on Instagram, breathingcall, write to me, I'm, my WhatsApp is on my website, breathingcall.com. I do six weeks trainings every three months, we go deep within, but you're gonna bring that to the world, it's a teacher training, because I believe that... When you have that, you get a better parents, you can help everyone around you. If you wanna check the answer to the world's problems, it's called murmuration. It's not about making a big impact, check murmuration, it's about impacting four, five people around you. That's it, that's it, four, five people, and together, it's a beautiful conspiracy of birds that are flying together. Incredible, that's how we change the world, next step, murmuration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for everyone, it is an incredible experience.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you for watching this.